Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Town of Lexington Council Meeting. This meeting is being held at Town Hall Tuesday evening, September 3rd, 2019. This meeting is being broadcast live and will be replayed several times over the next week on the Town's Cable Information Channel 1301 and will also be available for viewing on the Town's website. I'm Steve McDougall, the Mayor of Lexington. At this time, I would like to introduce to you my fellow council members. To my left is Mayor Pro Tem Hazel Livingston.
Good evening.
To her left is Councilmember Todd Cornes.
Good evening.
To his left is Councilmember Steve Baker.
Good evening.
To my right is Councilmember Kathy Manus.
Good evening.
To her right is Councilmember Ron Williams.
Good evening.
And to his right is Councilmember Todd Lyle.
Good evening.
At this time, it is my pleasure to introduce to you Pastor John Reeves from Radius Church in Lexington. If you do mind, please come forward and offer invocation. Is John here? Anybody seen John tonight? So, we're gonna, we're gonna go off-
Former pastor of Radius. How about the former pastor of Radius doing?
I hate to throw him under the bus like that, but it's always good to, for that. Wants a pastor, always a pastor. He never forgets that, so we'll be glad to let him pitch it for Mr. Reeves tonight. Offer invocation for tonight's meeting.
Glad to. Father, we pause just for a brief moment to say thank you, to acknowledge that every good gift comes down from you, the Father of heavenly lights, and you're the one who provides all the good things we enjoy: our life, our health, our peace, our prosperity, our friendships, our community, the food that grows out of our ground, just the goodness that all comes from you. We're very thankful. So, as we sit down to do business, to celebrate some great stuff that happened in our community and make some decisions, try to use wisdom to make it better, Father, we just ask that you would guide our steps. Your word says, "Many are the plans in a man's heart, but the Lord directs his steps." And so, we would ask for your direction, your continued blessing, and your favor. We ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Todd, thank you very much. Appreciate you doing that. It is appropriate tonight because of his uniform and his service to us if Todd Lyle would lead us in the invocation, or I'm sorry, the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. If everyone would please stand.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Todd, thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, I will call the meeting to order and report on our executive session this evening. Executive session this evening had one legal issue, an issue regarding pending litigation, and one legal issue advice regarding agenda items. We had two contractual issues. One was a downtown economic development issue, and the other was a farmer's market contract. We had two personnel items. It was a boards and commissions appointment and two routine personnel reviews. No vote was taken in executive session. Do I have a motion to ratify the mayor's executive session report?
So, move.
We have a motion by Mr. Baker and a second by Councilmember Manus. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. At this time, we will move into deletions on the agenda. Are there any deletions on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, we will move right into approval of the minutes. The minutes from the work session August 19, 2019, and council meeting August 19, 2019 were provided to you in your packets. Are there any omissions, additions, or corrections to either one of those work session or council meeting on August 19, 2019? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Amen.
We have a motion to approve. You have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Cornes seconds the motion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Those minutes are approved. We have some presentations this evening, but we need to add one. Councilmember Manus, I'll accept your addition to presentations.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I would like to add the additions for proclamations for Susanna Ashley Counts, Madison Emily Barrett, and Jacqueline Taylor Spires.
Very good. Those are for the beauty queens we have with us tonight. We did not make that on the agenda, but we got it a little bit after the agenda went out, so we want to add those to tonight's presentations. At this time, we'll move right into presentations. I will read the first presentation this evening. Gives me great honor. If I could have the Lexington Lion Cricket Club, please come forward and join us at the microphone. And welcome, gentlemen. Nice to have y'all here with us tonight. So, we'll be totally honest. Krishna is my neighbor in my neighborhood, and I've enjoyed getting to meet all the guys and enjoyed watching y'all play cricket. And you brought me in and taught me how to play. I got up, got suited up, stood up, and took a swing with the bat.
Did great.
Yeah. I think I got really lucky. But if you would indulge me really quick, I'm gonna read a presentation from the mayor and council. This is a proclamation of the mayor and council for the town of Lexington congratulating the Lexington Lions winners of the Eagle Cup 2019 Regional Cricket Tournament. Whereas cricket is a team game played with a ball and a bat that originated in Great Britain over 400 years ago and is played around the world. And whereas the Lexington Lions have been playing cricket in Lexington since 2014 and informed Palmetto Sports Incorporated to promote and develop the sport of cricket in Lexington through education and youth participation. And whereas the 12 teams from South Carolina competed in the Eagles Cup 2019 tournament. And whereas, August 25th, 2019, the Lexington Lions defeated the NM, I'm sorry, MNH Ravens, which is, where are they from?
Northeast Columbia.
Yeah, northeast Columbia. Yeah. Y'all noticed how he said that really loud, didn't you? To win the Eagles Cup championship by 17 runs. That's amazing. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by mayor and council for the town of Lexington that the Lexington Lions cricket team is hereby congratulated and commended for winning the Eagles Cup 2019, and they have our best wishes and support for their work to promote the sport of cricket and their success in future competitions dated this third day of September 2019. Steve McDougall, Mayor. Congratulations, fellas. I'll let you say a few words and introduce it a little bit and maybe introduce some of your teammates to us and-
Sure, sure, sir. You actually took all my notes and read it, put it in there. It was, first of all, thanks to the council here for having us tonight, and we really are so excited to be here and be recognized this way. We never imagined, because the way we formed the team, we were, trust me here, we were not selected by the so-called Columbia teams, and we decided to form our own team and get to the root, learn the sport as much as we can. We tried hard, and then we, you know, encouraged the sport in Lexington here, forming the PSI. And I would like to thank Mr. Mayor, has been continuous support for this all along from back in 2016, I believe, when I first met you with the request of, you know, providing us a ground, a place to play. And I still remember how you encouraged us to form the team and form the, you know, the nonprofit organization. And here we are. We are 501(c)(3) compliant, and we are working with the LCREC to get the, you know, field in much more better shape than what we were originally given. And, you know, I would like to thank Alvin and BJ from LCREC for their continued support as well. And when we started back in 2016, we were about 40 to 50 players in the whole Columbia and Lexington region, but here we are with 200-plus players participating in each tournament. So, beating 12 teams coming from all over the state, we are talking Greenville, Charleston, and Aiken?
Augusta.
Augusta, yeah, Augusta. So, and then eight other teams within the Columbia and Lexington region is not as small as human for us. So, we are very proud and we continue to make Lexington great.
That's fantastic. To win the championship, your third year into it, that's wonderful, guys. Congratulations.
And here is our captain, Malley. He's our captain of Lexington Lions. And Chandra Malampati, Chandra Venpatti, he's, yeah, he's our, is, we call it catcher in the back, so we call it wicket keeper. So, that's his role. And we got Satish, the batsman. We got Venkat Ganthanagari, he's an all-rounder. And Ravi, an all-rounder. And Sriram, an all-rounder too, a batsman and a bowler. And myself, I'm too, a batsman and a bowler here. So, usually, we are about 11, we play a team of 11 that we play, and we are missing a couple of friends today, tonight here. But on behalf of them too, I would like to extend my thanks to y'all.
Absolutely. If you don't mind, let's get a picture up front real quick.
Absolutely.
At this time, we will move into our second proclamation by Councilmember Steve Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Proclamation for the mayor and council for the town of Lexington recognizing September 2019 as Pulmonary Fibrosis Awareness Month. Whereas pulmonary fibrosis is a serious disease that creates scarring in the delicate lung tissue of affected patients, causing progressive incurable lung disease. And whereas pulmonary fibrosis progresses quickly, often causing limited quality of life, disability, and death within a few short years. And whereas, in many cases, there is no identified cause of pulmonary fibrosis, which is referred to as idiopathic pulmonary fibrosis, and about 200,000 people in the United States are estimated to be affected. And whereas, pulmonary fibrosis is often misdiagnosed and underdiagnosed, and a need has been identified to increase wide-ranging awareness and detection of this imperceptible disorder. And whereas, established in 2000, the Pulmonary Fibrosis Foundation is a nonprofit organization that maintains a global mission to serve as the trusted resource for the pulmonary fibrosis community by raising awareness, providing disease education, and funding research. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and council for the town of Lexington that September 2019 is hereby Pulmonary Fibrosis Awareness Month, and all citizens are urged to become informed and involved in the fight to eradicate this serious disease dated this third day of September 2019. Mayor Steve McDougall.
Ms. Brooks, are you here with us? Yes. Please come forward, join us at the microphone. We're glad to have you tonight. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Appreciate you having us.
Yes, ma'am.
And we appreciate the opportunity to be here and try to educate people as to this little-known disease that usually when the doctors say you have pulmonary fibrosis, you have, at this scenario, would be one to five years, or three to five years to live.
Oh, wow.
And I would say that runs true with a lot of people. We've lost, matter of fact, we started a group, a support group here in the Midlands area about three years ago, and Sue Amick is the one who really wanted to do this because it really meant the world to her. And she passed away a couple weeks ago from pulmonary fibrosis, and she did not last three years from the time it was diagnosed. But again, we wanted to say thank you, and my group would stand up, some of our members from our group, please stand up, be recognized.
Amen.
We're very lucky that two of our members have had double lung transplants and are doing good.
Wow, that's wonderful. Thank you so much for being with us. We'd love to grab a picture with you, and anybody else who would like to join in the picture, we'd love to have you in the picture and recognize you. Anybody else like to say anything? You're certainly welcome to. Our next presentation this evening will be a-
I'd like to say, I'd like to have all of y'all as donors, because we're very needed donors among the survivors.
Oh, very good. Thank you. Our next presentation this evening is from proclamation by Councilmember Todd Lyle. Councilmember Lyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, proclamation of the mayor and council for the town of Lexington recognizing September 2019 as the airbag recall repair month. Whereas 40,000 vehicles in the Columbia area and 193,000 vehicles in South Carolina have unrepared recalled airbags that put drivers and passengers at risk of injury or death. And whereas residents of Lexington are at a higher risk because of the increased high heat and humidity potentially transforming these recalled airbags from lifesaving devices to life-threatening ones, leaving local drivers and passengers more vulnerable to injury or death in a crash. Whereas the National Safety Council's Check to Protect program is educating residents in these defective airbags through a comprehensive approach to vehicle recall awareness. And whereas, it is the responsibility of all who put themselves behind the wheel to check their vehicles regularly for open recalls and to make safety a priority by getting their defective airbags repaired immediately. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and the council for the town of Lexington that September 2019 is hereby Airbag Recall Repair Month, and all citizens are urged to do their part to increase safety and become aware of the inherent danger of unrepared airbag recalls and take immediate action to fix open recalls. Dated this third day of September 2019.
Thank you, Todd. I believe we will mail that out to the group that asked us to recognize that as Airbag Recall Repair Month. Our next presentation will be a three-part presentation. If we could have the beauty queens, if you would please come forward, we'd like to recognize all three of you tonight as representatives of Lexington. We'd love to honor you. Our first proclamation is going to be read by Councilmember Todd Cornes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Proclamation of the mayor and council for the town of Lexington, South Carolina congratulating Madison Emily Barrett, Teen Miss South Carolina 2019. Whereas Madison Emily Barrett is a senior in the International Baccalaureate Program at Lexington High School and plans to attend Clemson University. And whereas she competed as Teen Miss Lexington in the Teen Miss South Carolina pageant where she was presented with the United States Presidential Volunteer Silver Award. And whereas Madison was crowned Teen Miss South Carolina in July 2019 in Hartsfield, South Carolina. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and council for the town of Lexington that Madison Emily Barrett is hereby recognized and congratulated for being crowned Teen Miss South Carolina 2019, and has expressed best wishes and all of her efforts as a representative of Lexington High School in Lexington, South Carolina dated this third day of September 2019 by the mayor, Steve McDougall.
Very good. Congratulations, Emily.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is from Councilmember Kathy Manus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a proclamation of the mayor and council for the town of Lexington, South Carolina congratulating Suzanne Ashley Counts, Little Miss South Carolina Overall Queen 2019. Whereas Suzanne Ashley Counts is a sophomore at Lexington High School and is in the Sign Language Club and plans to attend the University of South Carolina. And whereas she competed as Young Miss Teen Columbia in the Teen Miss South Carolina pageant. And whereas Suzanne was crowned Little Miss South Carolina Overall Queen in July 2019 in Hartsfield, South Carolina. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and council for the town of Lexington that Suzanne Ashley Counts is hereby recognized and congratulated for being crowned Little Miss South Carolina Overall Queen 2019, and has expressed best wishes and all of her efforts as a representative of Lexington High School in Lexington, South Carolina dated this third day of September 2019.
Congratulations, Suzanne. Our next presentation is from Councilmember Ron Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas Jacqueline Taylor Spires is a senior at Lexington High School where she is student body secretary and an officer for the Students in Action Club and plans to attend Clemson University. And whereas she competed as Teen Miss Hartsfield in the Teen Miss South Carolina pageant. And whereas Taylor was crowned South Carolina's Outstanding Teen 2019 in July 2019 in Hartsfield, South Carolina. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and council for the town of Lexington that Jacqueline Taylor Spires is hereby recognized and congratulated for being crowned South Carolina's Outstanding Teen 2019, and has expressed best wishes and all of her efforts as a representative of Lexington High School and Lexington, South Carolina dated this third day of September 2019.
We'd love to give you a minute if all of you would like to share something with us.
I would just like-
Go right ahead.
I would just like to thank you for letting us be here. It's really an honor.
Very good.
Thank you so much for letting us come out today and getting recognized. It's really an honor.
Well, we want to thank y'all for coming out and supporting the police department in their national night out. Y'all were gracious enough to come out and stand in that heat and the gnats, and we really appreciate you doing that. If you don't mind, we'd like to have a picture with all three of you, okay? Mr. Barrett, thank you very much for helping facilitate that. I really appreciate it. That concludes our presentations for this evening. If you'd like to stay for the business section of the meeting, you're certainly welcome to do that. If you'd like to leave at this point, you are certainly welcome to do that as well. We'll give you a few minutes if you'd like to. Gentlemen, thank y'all. Ladies, thank y'all for coming. Group, thank y'all for coming tonight. Your guys here tonight, Troop 221, thank y'all for being with us tonight. We appreciate y'all coming and sitting in the meeting. Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, our scoutmaster, Brian Jones, is with us tonight. We also have our adult leaders, John Leese and Paul Watkins, joining us tonight. This is actually fulfilling one of the requirements for an Eagle Required Merit Badge called the Citizenship in the Community Merit Badge. The last time that we appeared with council was two years ago when we had a fresh crop of Eagle Scout candidates in training. And the principle behind the Citizenship in the Community badge is embodied in part of the Scout oath, which where they promise, among other things, on their honor that they will help other people at all times. And those values are fulfilled with their involvement with community service, which is one of the strongest components of scouting wherein they are required to be a member of a scouting troop to donate time and talents, to service hours for the community in helping others. We are pleased and honored to be joining Town Council tonight, and thank you for assisting us in helping our scouts in their advancement.
Absolutely. Glad to support you any way we can.
Thank you very much.
Good luck, gentlemen, in your efforts to become Eagle Scouts. At this time, I will have a vision plan update for September 2019. We had great weather Friday night for the '70s and '80s Rock Tribute performed by the Interstate Exiles, thanks to WOMG 98.5 for hosting such a fun and free concert. If you missed it, we have more concerts to come. Last month, I announced Lexington Live's third free fall concert series lineup. So, get ready next Thursday, September 12th, for the kickoff with the Swinging Medallions. It is sure to be a great concert, and before we meet again, there will be three more Lexington Live concerts. They are September 19th at 6:30. We welcome the Mighty Kicks. September 26th at 6:30, we welcome back Tokyo Joe. And October 3rd at 6:30, we welcome the Big Time Band for their first appearance at the Ice House Amphitheater. On September 20th, the Ultimate Journey Tribute Band, Resurrection, is bringing back, and I'm sure they will fill up the Ice House Amphitheater for the third time. Doors open at 6 o'clock with the Interstate Exiles as the opening band. Tickets are $19. You do not want to miss this show. It is truly a no-miss event. You can always get more information about the Ice House Amphitheater events on icehouseamphitheater.com or on our pages of Facebook, Twitter, or Instagram. The Market at the Ice House update, just five more weeks for the Market at the Ice House, which is our farmer's market that we have every year, each Saturday through September 28th, from 9:00 a.m. in the morning till 12:00 p.m. Come check it out. We average 30 vendors a weekend, and attendance has averaged 150 to 200 people each weekend. Each month, I announce some of the events going on in and around Lexington. All these events are a result of the Town's Vision Plan, which was reviewed and updated in 2017, and again, this summer. We have stayed true to the guiding principles and goals of the Vision Plan, which includes Sustained Main Street as the downtown of the heart of Lexington and sustained Lexington's sense of community, just to name a few. You can read the entire Vision Plan on the Town's webpage, and as we said from the beginning, we did not want that to be a book that sat on the shelf. We were going to use it on our daily work that we do here at the Town. The council continues to look forward for ways every day to improve and preserve our community. We are always open to your ideas about your community. You can call me or any of our council members or staff and let us know if you think of something that will improve the quality of life of all citizens. That is the Vision Plan update for September 2019. At this time, we will hear a traffic update from Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Construction continues on the new deceleration lane in front of Walmart and Chick-fil-A on 378 and Sunset Boulevard. Please use caution in this area as the construction is-
is going on. Now that the new school year has started, there will be an increase in traffic on our roads, especially during peak drop-off and pickup times. Please use caution and allow more travel time to reach your destination. The next Traffic Committee meeting will be held on Wednesday, September 25th at 8:00 a.m. in the third-floor conference room of Town Hall. If you're aware of any traffic signal issue, unsafe roadway situation, or a pothole that needs to be repaired, please call 358-7273 and report it to us so we can handle it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. At this time, we will move into public hearings. Speakers for public hearings are limited to five minutes. Our first public hearing this evening is final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 5497-01-027 located at 224 Autumn Lane. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none. Item number two, final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 3420-01-043 located at 311 Pilgrim Point Court. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none. Item number three, final reading of an ordinance annexing a portion of Lexington County Tax Map Number 5423-02-004 located behind 210 Parker Street. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Very good. Item number four, final reading of an ordinance to purchase property approximately .20 acres. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Finally, item number five, final reading of an ordinance to purchase property approximately .73 acres. Anyone here wish to speak to that? And finally, item number six, final reading of an ordinance amending Section 31.02 of the Town of Lexington Code of Ordinances, Enforcement of Ordinances and Laws. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none. That concludes our public hearings for this evening. We'll move right into old business. Our first item of old business is from Councilmember Kathy Manis. Final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 5497-01-027 located at 224 Autumn Lane. Councilmember Kathy Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Charles Harmon and Rachel Allen own 1.22 acres located at the corner of Autumn Lane and Christie Street and have petitioned to annex the property. A single-family home is being planned on the site. Properties in town near this one are zoned industrial. Autumn Lane and Christie Street are not currently classified. The Planning Commission reviewed the annexation during their July meeting and recommended protected residential zoning for the property and limited local classification for both roads. I make a motion for final reading approval.
Councilmember Manis makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams, second. Submotion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Todd Carnes. Final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map 3420-01-043 located at 311 Pilgrim Point Court. Councilmember Carnes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Jay Patel, Mr. H. Patel, and Mr. J.J. Patel. I want a parcel located at 311 Pilgrim Point Court and have petitioned to annex the property. A single-family home is being constructed on the site. Properties in town near this one are zoned protected residential and Pilgrim Point Court is classified as an RL6 road. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their August meeting and recommended the same zoning and road classification for this parcel. I make a motion for final reading approval.
Councilmember Carnes makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lyle, second. Submotion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Ron Williams. Final reading of an ordinance annexing a portion of Lexington County Tax Map Number 5423-02-004 located behind 210 Parker Street. Councilmember Ron Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Timothy Parchetta owns a parcel located at 210 Parker Street. He is purchasing a parcel behind his home and is combining it with 210 Parker Street parcel. The portion being purchased is not in the town and Mr. Parchetta has petitioned for it to be annexed. Properties in town near this one are zoned protected residential and Parker Street is classified as a local road. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their August meeting and recommended the same zoning and road classification for this parcel. Make a motion for final reading approval.
Councilmember Williams makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker, second. Submotion. Any further discussion? Yes, sir. That is correct. Absolutely, yes. We are very fortunate here in the town of Lexington. We expand our borders every time we have this meeting because people annexing into the town of Lexington and making the town limits. Have you seen the town limit signs throughout town? Are we having to move those a lot here lately? And it's for a good reason. So that's exactly what's happening. So we have a motion and a second by Mr. Baker. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Steve Baker. Final reading of an ordinance to purchase property approximately .20 acres. Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Town Council is asked to purchase a piece of property in the town limits that consists of roughly .20 acres. The owner is willing to swap another property for the subject property, so there will be no purchase price. The property will help provide parking to the downtown area. In accordance with the Freedom of Information Act, the parcel will be identified once a deed is signed. I make a motion for final reading approval of an ordinance to purchase property.
Councilmember Baker makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Carnes, second. Submotion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Todd Lyle. Final reading of an ordinance to purchase property approximately .73 acres. Councilmember Lyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Town Council is asked to purchase a piece of property in the town limits that consists of two private ingress and egress roads comprising approximately .73 acres. The proposed contract price is $1,500. Once purchased, a portion of the property will be swapped for another property that will be used to assist in providing for parking downtown. The remainder of the property will be used to dedicate a public road, which is expected to help provide some traffic relief in the area. Pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act, the parcel shall be identified upon the signing of the deed. Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion for final reading approval of an ordinance to purchase property.
Councilmember Lyle makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker, second. Submotion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Mayor Pro Tem Hazel Livingston. Final reading of an ordinance amending Section 31-02 of the Town of Lexington Code of Ordinances, Enforcement of Ordinances and Laws. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Section 31.02 of the Town of Lexington Code of Ordinances deals with enforcement of ordinances currently, it reads as follows. Enforcement of ordinances and laws. All officers and employees of the municipality shall enforce obedience to such statutes, provisions of this code, and/or ordinances, resolutions, or rules and regulations, or orders issued thereunder as may relate to their regular duties and any other statutes, provisions of this code, or ordinances, resolutions, rules, regulations, or orders with whose enforcements they are properly chargeable, by any measures provided therein, by the proper report of any violation thereof, and by instituting such proceedings as may be necessary to such enforcement. The suggestion has been made to add the following at the 31.02. Where citation is to be issued for any of the town ordinances, it may be issued by the employee or department indicated in the ordinance or another appropriate authorized designee as determined by the town administrator. The change would give the ordinance more flexibility in enforcement. I make a motion for final reading of an ordinance amending 31.02 of the Town of Lexington Code of Ordinances Enforcement.
Mayor Pro Tem makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams, second. Submotion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. At this time, we will move into new business for this evening. Our first item of new business is from Councilmember Kathy Manis. First reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 3524-01-004 located at 129 Ashley Trace. Councilmember Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Shay Shin and Shenee Zoo recently purchased 14.47 acres located at 129 Ashley Trace Drive and have petitioned to annex the property. A single-family home is located on the site. Properties in town near this one are zoned general commercial and Ashley Trace Drive is not currently classified. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their August meeting and recommended protected residential zoning for the property and an RL2 road classification for Ashley Trace Drive. I make a motion for first reading approval.
Councilmember Manis makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lyle, second. Submotion. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Carnes.
Yes, I will ask Mr. Hanson. These 14 acres, I would assume that's mostly wetlands? And so, the recommendation for protected residential, is that PR1 or PR2?
PR1. Protected residential is PR1.
PR1. Perfect. Thank you, sir.
Any further discussion? We have a motion and properly second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Carnes. First reading of an approval of an ordinance adopting the MASC Model Small Cell Wireless Ordinance. Councilmember Todd Carnes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Municipal Association of South Carolina is recommending municipalities adopt the attached Model Small Cell Wireless Ordinance. Small cell requests are becoming quite common across the state. The adoption of the ordinance would allow the town to treat all future requests in the same manner. The town currently does not have an ordinance dealing with this topic. Therefore, I make a motion for first reading approval of this ordinance adopting the Municipal Association of South Carolina's Model Small Cell Wireless Ordinance.
Very good. Councilmember Carnes makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Manis, second. Submotion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Ron Williams. First reading of an ordinance establishing a new telecommunications franchise agreement with Selco Partnership doing business as Verizon Wireless. Councilmember Ron Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Selco Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless provides small cell projects that are designed to boost mobile phone coverage in populated areas. Small cell boosters are usually about three feet tall and are placed on existing utility poles where possible. Since the equipment will be placed in the public right-of-way, South Carolina law allows municipalities to enact a franchise agreement. The franchise agreement being requested is consistent with the other agreements for this type of equipment that have been adopted by the town. I make a motion for first reading approval.
Councilmember Williams makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lyle, second. Submotion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Steve Baker. First reading of an ordinance transferring a portion of Kaufman Farm Lane. Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Mr. Frank Chapman developed many of the commercial properties around Kaufman Farm Lane. When Kaufman Farm Lane was dedicated to the town as a public road, it included property in excess of the standard 50-foot right-of-way. This excess property is where the Cherokee Bend sign was permitted by the SCDOT before it was dedicated as a public road. The sign was recently destroyed by a car accident. The sign must be on private property if it is to be replaced. Mr. Chapman has requested the town transfer a portion of the right-of-way back to him. The area that would be transferred is shown on the attached drawing. I make a motion for first reading approval of an ordinance transferring a portion of Kaufman Farm Lane.
Councilmember Baker makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Carnes, second. Submotion. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Williams.
Mr. Paul, when we received this property from Mr. Kaufman back when he first originally transferred it to us, did we purchase it or did he give it to us? Or was it because he was building that road and they required it?
Mr. Kaufman and his family used to be the owners of the Golden Glow Dairy, so they owned both sides of the roads in that area. And as it developed, it was just transferred over. There wasn't a cost to the town as right-of-way for the road so that they could have a public road accessing their development. And as the item states, it was excess of what was required was transferred and there was an existing sign already there. So I think the crux of your question is we did not pay anything for that right-of-way.
Thank you.
Very good. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Lyle. Update to the wastewater pumping station design guidelines and standard specifications policy, something you've all been waiting for. Councilmember Todd Lyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Stay awake with me, people. The Utilities Department has been using standards from the town's ordinances which are outdated based on the department's needs. They've been working with the town's engineer to improve the design guidelines and standard specifications to meet the current needs. Following are several items included in the new guidelines. Number one, property will be deeded to the town and will not be an easement, which many times causes access problems due to vehicles parked in that same easement. Number two, the required area for the pump station allows turnaround space as well as easier access around the equipment. Number three, a standard wet well sizing at each pump station. Number four, canopies to protect the control panel and give staff a safe work area. Number five, either backup pumps or connections at each new pump station. Number six, equipment specified by model, materials, and manufacturer which standardizes pump stations, given the ability to minimize spare parts inventory. Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion for approval of the wastewater pumping station design guidelines and standard specifications policy.
Mr. Lyle makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams, second. Submotion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is a unanimous vote. Our next item of new business is from Mayor Pro Tem Hazel Livingston. First reading of an ordinance amending Section 51-02-0 of the Town of Lexington Code of Ordinances Sewer System Pump Station specifications. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Town of Lexington Sewer System Pump Station specifications have been updated and changes need to be reflected in the Town of Lexington's Code of Ordinances. The new specifications are attached and necessitate the amendment of subsection D and E of 51.02.02. Subsection D and E are to be deleted. Deleted and reference will be made to the attachment, which will be reflected in the Town Policy Manual. I make a motion for first reading of an ordinance amending 51.02.02 of the Town of Lexington Code of Ordinances Sewer System Pump Station specifications.
Mayor Pro Tem makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker, second. Submotion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Kathy Manis. Resolution to authorize Resolution to authorize completion and submittal of a state revolving loan fund application for I-20 sewer system pump station repairs. Councilmember Kathy Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The next phase of the I-20 wastewater system pump station repairs project is estimated to cost approximately $5.1 million. The project will entail the rebuilding of several stations enclosed out of lagoons in various combinations of pump replacement, wet well lining, and other repairs to other stations. The state revolving loan fund program offers loans at low rates and up to 30-year amortization for qualifying projects. In order to proceed with the SRF funding, town council must authorize by resolution prepared by bond council the completion and submittal of an application to SRF for the I-20 wastewater system pump station repairs. I make a motion for council approval of a resolution to authorize completion and submittal of a state revolving loan fund application for I-20 wastewater system pump station repairs.
Councilmember Manis makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lyle, second. Some motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Corrins. Sanitary sewer manhole cover design concept. Councilmember Todd Corrins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I will try to put a cap on all this sewer talk by moving us forward. Reminds me of my whole civil engineering days, when we said we did loads, roads, and commodes. Doing a lot of commodes tonight. Let's move on. At the August 19, 2019 work session, council considered a new design concept for manhole covers in the town sewer service area that would identify the town of Lexington. Attached is a concept drawing for the new manhole cover. The initial fee to create the mold at the foundry is $5,000. The purchase of manhole covers would be standard pricing for contractors after the initial fee. I make a motion for council approval of new manhole cover design concept and to update the town specifications.
Very good. Councilmember Corrins makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Councilmember Manis, second. Some motion, any further discussion? Yes, sir, Mr. Lyle.
Just want to make sure to point out, in case anyone is confused, just to be clear, this is a one-time fee of $5,000, never to be used again, so the regular price applies thereafter.
The same price we're paying for manhole covers will be the same after this. It's just to create the form to generate them with that logo on them.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Very good. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Ron Williams. Travel policy update. Mr. Williams.
At the August 19 work session, council reviewed updates and revisions to the town's travel policy. The updated policy is attached. I make a motion for council approval.
Mr. Williams makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Manis, second. Some motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Steve Baker. Boards and commissions appointments. Councilmember Steve Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
If you would, Mr. Baker, let's just read the one that we are appointing tonight.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Three boards and commissions applications have been received expressing an interest in serving on the Planning Commission, which has one vacancy. Mr. Chris Brownlee is a town resident and previously served on the City of Columbia Planning Commission. Copies of the applications are attached. I make a motion for council approval of Chris Brownlee to the Planning Commission.
Mr. Baker makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Corrins, second. Some motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our last item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Lyle. Mineral Springs Road Intersection Improvement. Councilmember Todd Lyle. Probably the most important thing we've talked about.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the August 19, 2019 work session, council discussed the Hope Ferry Road and the Mineral Springs Road traffic study. We had three options, A, B, and C. Council selected option C for the intersection improvements, with the secondary connector as the alternative for which to pursue funding. This choice includes improvements that were identified in the 2017 Local Transportation Improvement Plan, otherwise known as LTIP. Staff is requesting that council approve road and infrastructure funding for the design and construction of the town's portion of the US 378 at Mineral Springs Road intersection improvements identified by the LTIP, with the remainder to be paid for by future commercial development. Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion for council approval of the Mineral Springs Road Intersection Improvement request.
Councilmember Lyle makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Steve Baker, second. Some motion, any further discussion? I'd just like to say, Randy, thank you very much for your work on this and pulling this forward. It's very important for the town of Lexington to continue to improve our roads as much as we can, alleviate congestion, and you've worked really hard in putting this plan together. We appreciate it very much.
Would it be appropriate for Randy just to say a couple of?
Absolutely. If you'd like him to, Councilmember Manis.
Can you just say a little bit about what this will look like, or what we're doing? You could just talk through it if we don't have that.
What alternative C is, in a nutshell, is improvements that were identified from all directions to take that corridor from the current level of service F, which is basically failing conditions, to an improved level of service ranging from CD, which is considered to be acceptable. What it includes is, our portion that we've, that you all have approved moving forward with, is a complete decel lane that will go on the eastbound 378 and enter onto Mineral Springs Road. Other, the plan, alternate C, includes major improvements at Hope Ferry Road, which currently is just identified, as well as some significant improvements on Mineral Springs. We have been working diligently with some local development to incorporate that component as part of their improvements. So as of right now, we've got a plan for the decel, or we've got permission to move forward with the decel lane on 378. We have a commercial development that has submitted plans to SC DOT for the Mineral Springs improvements. And then currently, all we have is concept plan for Hope Ferry Road at this point. The alternate C does include a proposed connector between Tom Corley Place and Mineral Springs Road. That, this allows us a tool as development occurs, those types of things, to identify how we can create that connection.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Williams.
Randy, based on what you're seeing so far with DOT, with the One Way Pair Project, how long it took to do that, and what we're dealing with now in front of Lexington Elementary School, do you have a timeline of about when you think this project will be started?
The decel lane will be a local project. The One Way Pair Project, the hospitality tax projects are large-scale, and we are in an intergovernmental agreement with DOT, so all of that work goes through program management at headquarters. The decel lane would be managed at the local district office, so therefore should take, I hate to put a time on it, but...
Because you know we're gonna hold you to it.
Yeah, I appreciate you not holding me so far.
I just wanted an idea for town residents of when we think we might start this.
Honestly, it's about a year process.
Probably a year before we start?
About a year.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Manis.
This is, I guess, Brett and Randy. Four years ago tonight, this council voted to pass the hospitality tax. So, how much money, I know I'm putting you on the spot, approximately how much money have we received from the hospitality tax?
Somewhere between 10 and 11 million.
Okay, and so that's been used to do the One Way Pairs and to improve traffic?
Yes, ma'am, the One Way Pairs, all the work downtown, the work that's happened on Jenny Lane, the improvements that have happened at I-20 and 378, kind of across from Jenny Lane, all that was done with that, and then a significant amount of engineering. So, the project that's just about to go to bid for the widening in front of the elementary school, to tie that into, on 6, to tie that into where the four lanes are in front of the middle school, that, all that engineering has been done with that money. The engineering to move Drear Street and tie it in with the Zelia Street, which is sort of part of that project, it's been done with that. And then the overarching, you guys saw at the retreat, the big study for the Corley Mill area, and all the time and effort engineering that's gone in there, that also has been funded for that, so.
So, when we were having the conversation about whether to pass hospitality tax, that was a difficult conversation for many of us, but we found that that was the only way to improve traffic in our town, is we had to do it ourselves, because we could not depend on the state, and we could not depend on the federal government to give us money to take care of our citizens. And so, four years ago, we took that hard, made a hard decision to pass the hospitality tax. Now, at that time, we had people saying, "Oh, we will run businesses out of this town." Has that happened?
No, ma'am.
No, ma'am.
Not in any way, shape, or form.
We have continued to grow and...
We've seen business license in that same time period increase over $500 million in gross revenues.
So, even though we took the hard decision to pass the tax, we did it because we had to make our town safe, and that was the only way we could do it. So, four years ago tonight, this council made that hard decision, and I appreciate the fact that the council did that.
Yes, ma'am, and if I could add, it really did take a lot of political courage to do that, and I applaud you guys for doing what you've done, and hopefully, we're proving that that was, staff is proving that that was a good investment of money, because we're seeing some very positive results for it day after day.
So, we can look out for our own, and that's what we did.
That's exactly right. Thank you very much. Anyone else have anything they'd like to share?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Lyle.
Randy, thanks again for your hard work on this. I know the data is pretty overwhelming as far as the number of cars. I believe 25% of all cars in the county go down, isn't that right, Brett?
Yes, sir.
25% through the intersection of Hope Ferry and 378. One quarter of the cars of the entire county, so you've got a lot to work with, you've got a lot to do, but you're doing great, and appreciate that.
That's also almost 2% of the population of the state every day.
And Mr. Lyle and I realize that, because we travel that road daily.
We do.
Because we live on Hope Ferry.
Very good. We have a motion properly second, and all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. That concludes our business for this evening. At this time, we will hear announcements from Councilmember Ron Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The mayor mentioned many upcoming events and concerts to be held at the Ice House Amphitheater, including the market. I encourage you to visit the town's social media pages for a complete list of events. The appearance of, the Board of Appearance will meet on September 10 at 8:30 a.m. here in Council Chambers. Council will meet again on September 16 at 6 p.m. for Council's September Work Session in the Eli Mac Room. Don't forget, the Lexington Police Department Foundation is holding their second annual golf tournament on September 16. All proceeds provide funding for needed equipment, unexpected expenses, and to pilot new community-based outreach programs. If you'd like to participate, please call 359-6260. The Planning Commission will meet on September 18 at 8 a.m. for their regular meeting here in Council Chambers. The Traffic Committee will meet on September 25 at 8 a.m. in the third-floor conference room. Later this month, we'll be wishing Councilman Todd Corrins a very happy birthday on September 28. Our prayers go out to, tonight, to the citizens of the Bahamas after such a direct hit from Hurricane Dorian. As the hurricane turns towards our coast, we encourage you to follow all the advice given by local emergency officials. Stay safe and please be patient with traffic as thousands evacuate the coastal areas of South Carolina. Thank you for watching our town council in action tonight.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Anybody else have anything they'd like to share?
Very good. I would like to welcome our newest employee, Lauren Barnes. Welcome. She is our new PIO for the town, and she's doing a wonderful job. We're glad to have you onboard, and welcome to tonight's meeting. Also, I'd like to welcome my man Jonathan Manis. A happy birthday. I think he's out there watching. When I first met him seven years ago, he was a little bitty guy, came up to about my kneecap. Now, he's taller than I am in high school. He's doing really well, so happy birthday, Jonathan. Just wanted to send that out to you. Anyone else have anything they'd like to share? Very good. Any questions from the news media? I don't believe we have any public comments. Anyone in the audience have anything they'd like to ask about the agenda tonight? Hearing none, that concludes our business for this evening. Thank you for watching the town council meeting for the town of Lexington. This meeting was held at Town Hall on Tuesday evening, September 3, 2019. A recording of this meeting will be aired on the town's information cable channel, 1301, several times during the week, and the video will be available on the town's website at Without objection, we are adjourned.